I called to all the meeting of passing independent sport regular session on Tuesday, May 26, 2020 by telephonic and art deal conferences in accordance with suspension of certain provisions of Texas Open Meeting Act as authorized by the Governor of Texas and the State Attorney General at 5:30 PM. On my page here. Board member President, Mr. Jack Bailey, Kenny Fernandez, Vicki Morgan, Mr. Fred Roberts, Mel Sullivan, Mary Alcochano, and myself, Marshall Kendrick. Board members absent, none. But the record established indicate that from a board of members is present that this meeting is duly called and that knows that this meeting was posted in accordance with Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. I'd like Ms. Morgan to give the invocation to Mr. Bailey to pledge, please.
If you'll pray with me, please. Our most gracious heavenly Father, Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the rain that you've given us the last couple of days, and we thank you that we're all here tonight and we're safe. Father, we ask that you be with us through this meeting tonight. We ask that you keep us all safe, keep our staff and our students in your loving care, Father. Father, we thank you for all the first responders and those that are providing care for us in these days. These are difficult times, but we know that you're by our side, Father. Father, now be with us through the remainder of this meeting. May everything that we do and say be pleasing to you. We ask all these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
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 Unmute Jack.
Hello, Jack.
Hey, Jack, Jack.
I'm sorry.
Where were you at?
How many, Marshall?
What? You're the pledge man.
Okay. Let's say the pledge to the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now the state flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
I was doing my best work muted, okay? Sorry.
You keep cutting out. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. We're going to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.074. The purpose of considering the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, dissonant dismissal of a public officer, employee, your complaints or charges against a public officer or employee, attorney matters related to superintendent's recommendations to hire administrative personnel, and are the superintendent's recommendations related to renewals. 551.074 and 551.071, for the purpose of considering the evaluation of the superintendent, any amendments to superintendent's contract and related actions. 551.071, to consult with the district's attorneys concerning matters of which the attorney's duty to the district under the code of professional responsibility clearly reflects conflicts with Texas Open Meeting Act, to seek the advice of his attorneys without about pending or content litigation or settlement offer and are considered legal advice regarding items specifically listed on the agenda. 551.072, for the purpose discussing the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. Will now convene. Reconvenance.
Okay, we're gonna leave and they're gonna work on it after we're gone. So we'll go ahead and get out and go to executive session.
Mr. Kendrick, we did a roll call and all of our board is present. So whenever you want to get started.
Okay, thank you. We're ready to go and we're reconvening an open session. Sorry we've been so long, but we've had some necessary business we need to take care of, and I know you appreciate that. We have public comments. We do have some tonight, but they'll be in miscellaneous section because they're not an agenda item. We'll see that later. Mr. Marquez. Special recognition, Deanne.
Yes, sir. Board members, tonight we do have a special recognition. We're pleased to have Tanya Hager here. Sure, of course, you know her well, but for those of us joining in, she's the Executive Director of Career and Technical Education, and she's gonna introduce some special recipients that have been doing great things all year long and need our recognition.
Excellent. Thank you. Good evening, board members and Dr. Powell. It is an honor to be here this evening to recognize individuals who, under the guidance of their dedicated advisors, have excelled and represented their schools and this district by advancing to an international career in technical education competition. As you know, this year looked a little different for us due to COVID-19, and while we had a record 422 students advanced to state-level competition, very few of them actually had the opportunity to attend, and therefore, the number of students advancing advancing to an international competition is a fraction of what it typically is. The amazing group of students here this evening were either able to compete at the state level in person prior to the pandemic, or their scores were some of the highest in the state, which automatically qualified them to advance based on updated guidelines from their respective organizations. This year, we had a total of 18 students advanced to an international competition, many of whom are with us here tonight. I'd like to start by recognizing our BPA students. These are our future business professionals who were scheduled to compete in Washington DC in May. From Sam Rayburn High School, we have Victoria Patino, who competed in digital media production, and Eileen Pina, who competed in desktop publishing. The proud advisors of these amazing students are Mr. Mahabbab Alam and Ms. Billy Pardon. So congratulations to the business professionals of America from Sam Rayburn High School. We also had several DECA students advanced to international competition, and these are our future marketing professionals who were slated to compete in Nashville, Tennessee at the end of April. From Pasadena Memorial High School, we have Alura Monroe and Alexia Villarreal, who competed in an entrepreneurship team decision-making event. Their advisors are Mr. Tim Boyd and Ms. Itzel Guajardo. From Sam Rayburn High School, we have Manasa Sapon, who competed in financial consulting. His advisor is Mr. Charles Canalas. Congratulations to these DECA students and their advisors for building programs that excel year after year.
Interesting.
Next, I'd like to recognize our HOSA students. These are our future healthcare professionals who will one day be on the front line working to keep our population healthy. From Doby High School, we have Kennedy Ho, Ashley Nguyen, and Thwin Vu. This is the second year in a row this group has advanced to international competition in HOSA Bowl, and it is Kennedy's third year to advance to international competition. Their proud advisors are Dr. Rob Francis, Mr. Corey Perry, and Ms. Cheryl Sanders. This group was scheduled to compete right here in Houston at the end of June, and thankfully, they will still have an opportunity to compete using an online platform, so we will definitely keep you posted on their results. Last, I'd like to recognize our VEX Robotics students. As you know, these students build a robot from the ground up, write code to make it perform and win year after year. In fact, this year, Team 231X won the Excellence Award at the state championship, which is the most prestigious award a team can earn. These students were scheduled to compete in Louisville, Kentucky at the end of April. From Lewis Career and Technical High School, we have Heaven De Leon, Sophia Garay, Ashley Sanchez, Megan Scarsella, David Gomez, Marcus Gomez, Kenny Lee, Mauricio Nunez, John McAllister, and Kwan Vo. Their advisors are Ms. Keta Lamas and Mr. David Scarsella. I would also like to thank all of the principals of these students for their commitment and continued support of our career and technical education programs. From Doby High School, Mr. Franklin Moses. From Lewis Career and Technical High School, Mr. Steve Fleming. From Pasadena Memorial High School, Mr. Jeremy Richardson, and from Sam Rayburn High School, Ms. Vanessa Reyes. If any of these international qualifiers or advisors are here tonight, would you please wave so the board and other meeting attendees can recognize you?
Wonderful.
Yes. Congratulations to you all again. Yes, we're so proud of you all and commend you on advancing to this level of competition. We know the dedication it takes on the part of you, your families, and your advisors. Board members and Dr. Powell, thank you again for your continued support.
Thank you, Tanya.
Congratulations to all those students. Fantastic.
I wish they were here in person so we could give them a high five and more than just a Zoom meeting, but they know how awesome they are, and again, we look forward to great things in their future. That's great. Thank you, Tanya.
Absolutely. Okay. We're going to consent agenda.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the consent agenda. Second.
Welcome by Mr. Miss Sullivan. Excuse me. Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions? All in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of administrative personnel, Ms. Keano.
Mr. President, I move to approve Addendums A through I.
Second.
Second, motion by Mrs. Keano, second by Mr. Fernandez. Got it right this time.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, we have several this evening.
We better vote on them first.
Oh, yes.
Okay, motion by Ms. Marcell, Keano, second by Mr. Fernandez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Marcell.
Okay, our first one this evening. I'd like to welcome to the PISD family Paige Davis. If I can have her pop up on my screen here.
She's on my page too, Ms. Keano.
If I can have her on mute.
Hello.
Hi, how are you? Welcome to PISD.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
We usually have you introduce any family that you might have, but she, let me first introduce you a little bit. You are new to the position of Licensed Specialist in School Psychology with Special Education, so welcome to you. I don't know if you have anybody with you there this evening with you that you would like to introduce.
I, yeah, I don't. I have four children, but they're all teenagers, and so, you know, no, that, no one wanted to be part of, you know, a Zoom meeting tonight, so, no. I don't have anybody that wanted to join, but thank you.
Well, welcome to PISD, and you've got 225 others with you this evening, so.
Yeah.
Large family.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we do have another congratulations to another LSSP in School Psychology with Educational, with Special Education, is Ellen Harris. She can unmute herself. Hi there.
Okay, I was trying to unmute myself.
I know, but there's always that weird pause. Congratulations.
Thank you. I'm happy to be here.
I don't know if you have anybody with you today you'd like to introduce with you this evening?
No, it's just me.
Well, that's good enough for us. So congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Did we say her position, or did I miss that? I'm not sure. Okay, congratulations and welcome.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
If anybody missed that, is Licensed Specialist in School Psychology with Special Education.
Right.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Our next individual is congratulations to another Licensed Specialist in School Psychology with Special Education, who is also an intern for us, is Tanya Perez.
There she is.
Hi.
Hi. Congratulations.
I don't have, thank you. I don't have anyone either.
That's okay. You have all of us. So congratulations, intern for us. So that's very nice that you continue on. We're excited about that.
We're all cheering for you.
Me too, me too.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Our next one is another Licensed Specialist in School Psychology with Special Education as well, who has also been an intern at Pasadena ISD. Her name is Sharice Taylor.
Ah, man.
Hello.
You're not Sharice Taylor.
Ah, there we go.
There she is. There she is.
Hi. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Our next one is also an intern, but has been with Pasadena ISD for quite some time, and is also a Licensed Specialist in School Psychology with Special Education. Congratulations to Tanya Weaver.
Hello.
Hi there. Hi, thank you so much.
And you have somebody to introduce.
I'm sorry?
You have somebody to introduce.
Yes, this is my husband, Brad Weaver. He's my biggest supporter, so.
Okay, Brad, get on the other side.
Congratulations.
There you go.
There you go.
There you go.
Yeah, so I'm so blessed to be able to continue my career with Pasadena ISD, so thank you so much.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
We're excited as well, so congratulations to you. And then we have congratulations to Candace Arthur, who is the new position for the Reading Academy Program Coordinator.
Thank you, everyone.
She got a crowd.
You do have a crowd.
Yes, two daughters, my mother, and a family friend.
Awesome.
That's great.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I'm super excited.
Good for you. Good for you.
We're excited for you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
This is a big one as well. Our new, and congratulations to our new Assistant Principal for Freeman Elementary School, is Ms. Olivia Garza.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Congratulations, Olivia.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. I'm super excited and I'm ready to be a, continue to be in the Freeman box.
Great.
Good for you.
Love all your crosses.
Yes, sir.
We are excited for you, so congratulations to you. And last, but certainly not least, big congratulations to our new principal. Well, not last, I'm sorry, I still have another one. This is a big one. Principal for the community school is Ms. Jennifer Capra.
There she is.
Congratulations, Jennifer.
Thank you. Thank you very much for this honor.
It is definitely. You have a big supporter, we know, and you have definitely lots of supporters behind you. Would you like to introduce those?
Yes, this is my husband and three of my, my six sons. They're here. The other three are teenagers and didn't want to be here. Thank you, guys.
Congratulations.
I did for you.
Good for you.
You got big shoes to fill.
Yes, I do.
We're behind you.
You'll do great.
Thank you, guys.
And certainly, this is a big one. Principal at Jackson Intermediate School, a big congratulations goes to Jennifer Stewart.
Congratulations, Jennifer. Good job.
Hi, thank you so much. It's an honor to continue serving the people of Pasadena ISD, and I look forward to meeting my new school family. Go Wildcats.
Congratulations, Ms. Stewart. Welcome to Wildcats.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Proud of you.
Behind you.
Yes, so my husband's in the back. That's BJ. This is my daughter Drew and my son Ben.
Good-looking family.
Thank you.
Well, we're very excited for everybody. This is certainly a very challenging year, very challenging time, but we look forward to what our next school year has to offer. Congratulations to all of you and welcome to Paige, to the PISD family, and on to next business.
The board members, usually this is where all the staff members from the different schools will go out in the hall and make all that noise, meeting their new leader. So I just want to reassure them that both the new principals will be reaching out to them to set up a time to either meet virtually or face-to-face, as it's safe to do so, and they'll get a chance to meet those individuals. So not so much for Capra, since she's coming from the same campus, but I know the Wildcats on here will want to meet Ms. Stewart just as fast as they can. So congratulations to everyone.
Thank you, Dr. Powell. Consideration and possible approval of superintendent summative evaluation.
Mr. President, I move that the board approve the superintendent summative evaluation as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Second by Mr. Roberts. Any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Possible approval amendment to superintendent's contract and related actions.
Mr. President, I move that the board approve the amendment to the superintendent's contract as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries.
I, I just have one comment. I want to say that everybody in Pasadena needs to know that you have, and we have, the best superintendent anywhere, and we love her. She's done a fantastic job, and we look forward to many years to come.
Yes.
Amen.
Amen.
Thank you all.
Very proud of her and what she does.
Absolutely.
I appreciate your teamwork with me and beside me in this journey and the great people of PISD, whether that's the folks that work here or the folks that just support us on a daily basis, from the community and parents and just various stakeholders. It's been an awesome wild ride at times, but it's all been worth it for the kids, and that's what counts. It's what we're doing for kids.
Thank you for your leadership.
Great job, Deanne.
Consideration and possible approval of additional personnel for the 20,000, excuse me, 2020, 2021 school year.
So move. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mr. Fernandez. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of reclassification and new position for the 2019, 2020 school year.
So move. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Consideration and possible proof of cooperative agreement with Stephen F. Austin University for clinical teaching placement.
So move.
Motion made by Mr. Fernandez. Second.
Second.
By Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Certified personnel from information only, support personnel for information only, educational section. Consideration and possible approval of Pasadena ISD 2019, 2020, 2020. High school students' first semester GPA ranking to become the final GPA ranking for the school year 2019, 2020.
So move. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Consideration and possible proof of application for a TEA Mist Instructional Day waiver for all counties due to COVID-19.
So move. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Consideration and possible proof of instructional materials inventory requirement waiver for 2019, 2020 school year.
So move. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Consideration and possible proof of 20,000, 2020, 2021 memorandum of understanding between the Pasadena Independent School District and the Harris County Juvenile Board.
So move. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mrs. Sullivan. Comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Consideration and possible proof of 20,000, 20, 2021 memorandum of understanding between the University of Houston Clear Lake or two BCBA graduate assistants.
So move. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mr. Fernandez. Comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Consideration and possible proof of honoring UIL recommendations to use 2019, 2020. Didn't we pull this?
Yes, sir. We did pull that, so if you want to just make note of that, Susan will as well.
Okay, we pulled it. Information only update on Pasadena ISD extended year program for summer 2020.
This is going to be a brief presentation by Dr. Hickman. She just, because we've had changes, and of course, you had previously approved summer school and the format it was going to be in, she's just gonna quickly go over the new plans that we have.
There we go. Um, yes, I'm unmuting and I'm sharing my screen, so let me get both things done. And all right, can you guys see the stop the summers, stop the summer slide?
Yes.
Okay, very good. So this is just a recap of our plans for the year and for this summer, and they have changed quite a bit, of course, from what we had presented to you in February. The commissioner gave us some really good data, and it's something that we've talked about in our district for a while, which is the summer slide. But instead of just having three months away from the school building, we've definitely tried to keep our instruction going, but they've had, they're gonna, by the fall, they'll have had a closure to six months away from a classroom. And it just, these charts show that when you have these school closures, the, there are TI scores based on things like the MAP data that we've been using, that there's quite a bit of slowdown expected. And if you look at this one, especially in mathematics, so if you look at this downward turn in mathematics for fourth and third, up here in eighth grade, it's, it's pretty drastic. And so it's, there's also a decline in reading, but in the upper grades, especially in math, you get a real decline when you are out of school for summer, much less for the additional time. So we have put some real efforts into changing what we, our plans were for the summer and to make sure that our kids for the entire summer remain engaged. So we're doing that on many levels. So we're, what we're calling a continuation program, a filling in the gaps, a moving forward program, enrichment, and then contests for all. So I'm just gonna briefly tell you about each of those. Because the majority of our students have not been in a virtual world before learning, that has been a totally new experience for them and their families and our teachers. We had some kids who did not completely finish all of the work that they needed to do to be ready for the next school year. So we had no intention of retaining those kids. What we wanted was them to demonstrate mastery of the current grade levels work. So we are giving them extended time into June to finish that work. So different kids will finish at different times, but we are gonna give them a lot of support and mentoring and help to make sure that they are ready as they are promoted to the next grade level. So we're doing that in grades four through 12. So we're calling that our continuation program, and we have a lot of kids that we think are gonna be participating, since some of them are doing extra hours of work right now, because they don't, they didn't really think we were gonna be serious that they had to finish their work. So they're, they're doing amazing things right now, and I'm sure that next week they will too, because they are looking forward to summer as much as the rest of us. The other thing we're gonna be doing is what we're calling filling in the gaps. So we're gonna have summer programs for English language development, so our recent arrivals and students who are primarily Spanish speakers and have come in recently, so that's pre-K and K kids that are just entering into school, and also fifth through 12th graders. So that's just an English development work that we do every year. So that's just an English development work that we do every year, but especially with them being out of school for an additional three months, we feel like this is super important. Then K to four, we're doing something very different than what we did in the regular school year, and it's still going to be virtual, but it's a small group focused instruction. So we're hoping for less than five kids in 45-minute blocks with some very talented teachers to do some intensive instruction with them and then give them assignments and practice after that. So we're going to really try to make up some ground with those students, especially in the areas of reading and mathematics. Then we have the five through 12 normal credit recovery from the first semester to make sure that they'll be able, that they have the knowledge that they need to be promoted to the following grade level or in high school to get credit. We're going to expand our special education, ESYS. A lot of our students did not, were not able to participate at the level that we wanted them to, and now that we've gotten going with them, we want to continue their work and make sure that they don't go backwards. We have gotten right at $600,000 from the state, additional money to help with any of the COVID deficiencies that have happened because of that. So we'll have additional personnel, OTPT, speech therapy, all those kinds of services that we want to make sure that our kids haven't gone backwards in. And then we're going to miss Tom. Tom, this is your last swan song. Get it. Community, school, graduation, recovery. We're going to have that going too, and I hope that he'll be showing up for that and not just, they can Jennifer do all the work.
He better.
All right. So then we also are going to do some moving forward and enrichment as we do every year, but we're going to continue that. So we're going to do the initial credit for high school through virtual school for kids who are trying to, who are in lots of activities and can't fit everything into their schedule, math bridge courses, so that kids who would like to do advanced math can compact math this summer and be able to advance collegiate scholars academy, and that's SAT, PSAT prep, GT exploration camps. And we're actually just in a publication that I just saw this evening for the GT and the collegiate scholarship work and the contest we're going to be talking about in a minute. So congratulations to our advanced academics crew on that. Career exploration camps and A summer programs are going to be in full swing. And finally, the thing that I'm really excited about that will go all the way through August, and that is lots of different summer contests for our kids. And this is, the idea between this is to stop the summer slide, filling gaps for all students, so not even the ones that we picked to come to summer school. Keep kids engaged in fun learning and, of course, keep kids reading and moving forward in mathematics. So we're doing that at every level. Elementary, calling it the summer academic challenge, and they can get three different ribbons and it's the triathlon with Dreambox lessons, Ice Station lessons, and then reading contests. And we have all kinds of prizes and ways that any child who makes it to a certain level, so they're all going to be aiming at a level at each of those things, and if they get there, they get to have those prizes. So they did really well this year. While we were doing all that instruction, they were also working hard on Dreambox particularly, and we saw a lot of those gaps getting filled in even during our time out of the building. We have a similar thing for middle school, so we have all kinds of reading challenges, the Dreambox plus art, music, and physical activity challenges. And the same thing is going on for intermediate, and I was going to share with you guys the kinds of things that are happening that are kind of fun at all three of the middle school, intermediate, high school, and elementary level. There's all kinds of physical activities the kids can pick from, fine arts, you've got art, music, dance, theater, and then mental health wellness things that include journaling and all kinds of conversations that they can have, even down here playing a game with your family, just things to help them connect. And we know that there's a lot of social emotional issues that are going on in our community right now with people out of work and all those. So we're trying to hit the whole child here besides the academics that we already talked about. And finally, in the high school, we also have some challenges. I'm excited to see what this is going to be like on escape room academic challenge, a summer reading challenge. We're doing some work with Khan Academy, TikTok challenges, all kinds of things. So we're really excited, and hopefully our parents will get involved and encourage their kids. And we're getting the word out on the website and other means for kids to all stay engaged all summer long. And while the rest of the country says, oh, kids all slide during the summer, they're not going to do anything, they're tired, we're going to say, let the sun shine on summer learning in Pasadena, and we're not going to give up. They are going to, I hope, engage. A lot of kids will move forward. That's our goal.
Thank you, Dr. Hickman. This right here just shows what Pasadena is all about and what you guys have done, and just going over and beyond when, you know, some people might be sitting back. You guys are not only being proactive, but, you know, seeing and taking care of the slide. So thank you guys very much, you and your team.
Thank you. We're very excited about what could happen this summer.
Amen.
Awesome. Great job.
Great job, Karen.
Thank you very much. By the way, all of my executive directors worked on all these things, not me. I just get to present it. Just by the way.
If it's a team, it's always a team.
That's right. That's right. Thank you.
So just a reminder, board members, we're allowing the technology to stay out this summer, which I know sounds like a huge risk, but we're trusting our families and our students to put those to great use this summer. And we'll be making Herculean efforts to get that technology back in the fall, but I think it's going to pay off huge dividends. So we're going to be monitoring that and giving you updates on it. So this is the last you'll hear about our summer efforts by any means.
Thank you. We have now spotlight on special programs.
Yes, Gloria Gallegos is going to share just a few success stories about how they helped track down kiddos that were thought to be lost by their high schools, intermediates, middle schools, and elementary. So I'll turn it over to Gloria.
Are you ready, Karen?
Yes, go right ahead.
Okay, well, good evening, board members and Dr. Powell. So we had a great opportunity to be able to support our campuses in recapturing children that were either disconnected, not doing their work, or some that could not be found. And so we undertook the challenge and the opportunity to be able to recover the children and bring them back to school so that they can either graduate or be promoted to the next level. So these numbers that you have before you, it's about 638 total students. And so out of the 600 students that were not engaged, approximately 56% were able to get connected, get re-engaged, and actually completed courses and got them ready for graduation. So what we decided to do tonight is to pick a few stories, because we have a lot of stories that we learned as we knocked on doors and searched for the children. And so we thought that you would enjoy listening to some of the stories and gives you a little bit of a flavor in terms of what were the challenges that the children and the families were encountering. So the first story that you had that we would like to share is a second grade student at Genoa Elementary. His name is Mike Mackey. So the campus shared that Mackey was not turning in assignments. Mackey is one of five children cared by the grandmother. Family received food assistance through South Main Baptist. And by the way, South Main Baptist has been an incredible partner with us in terms of providing food and resources to our, most of our homeless parents. But during the food delivery, special program staff member connected with Mackey and inquired why wasn't he in school and completing his assignments. He stated he didn't have any school supplies. So the staff member purchased school supplies and provided weekly monitoring. The student now completes schoolwork at all times. So that's a second grade from Genoa. The next one is an eighth grader from San Jacinto Intermediate. Her name is Lupita. Campus shared that Lupita was behind and failing in all her courses. Parents shared that they did not have internet access. Parent coordinator shared with the family a listing of low-cost providers, and that was at the time before we had the laptops and the Mi5s. So two days later, the family had confirmed with us that they did indeed get the internet connection. Parent coordinator also guided Lupita in the creation of a Google account, which enabled her to attend tutorials with teacher. Lupita now has completed all of her assignments early and is ready to become a freshman.
Great.
The next one, Fred, no comment from you, okay? The next one is Fred. And Fred is a seventh grader at Beverly Hills Intermediate. Fred was behind in five courses and was failing. When the parent coordinator reached out to the parents, they stated that they were unaware and were surprised because Fred was in his computer daily. The mother also shared that the campus called, but she did not understand since she only spoke Spanish, entrusted her son to provide communication. Our parent coordinators provided step-by-step detailed instruction on how to monitor her son's work on agility, and within four days, he was all cut out on his coursework. Now the parent coordinator and the mother continued to monitor his progress. The next two are siblings, one in PK and one in third grade at Genoa Elementary. And this is really a set case, but we were able to connect him to different court services. Father is alone with children and desperate for help because his wife is in the hospital. The father is out of work. He was in construction with no way to earn extra income as he has to stay at home with the kids. Behavioral specialists connect the family to PISD free lunch and also to food pantry. The family connected the father to the trauma and grief component therapy at Texas Children's Hospital because the children were exhibiting signs of major grief and anxiety. The campus continues to stay in contact with family and teacher, and teacher is very supportive as well. So the number of partnerships that we have created in terms of the mental health arena is really heavily used, especially during this time. So part of what the families shared with us, a great deal of gratitude, and there's no way that we can capture all the notes and expressions of gratitude, but I think you might enjoy reading some of this. And this one is, was written for South Main Baptist Church, and I know some of you go to that particular church, and we want to thank you for the great partnership. So I thought you would enjoy reading it. And so what we did is the note, you noticed the handwritten notice in Spanish, so it was translated so that you could read it. But at the end of the day, everybody was very grateful and appreciative, and some very surprised that the folks were coming to be able to provide services and really risking what they can, what the parents said, risking their lives in a time where COVID has been rampant. But at the end of the day, this expression of gratitude, and you can see how grateful they are. So the picture with the house and the flowers, go back one, Karen, is really the student doing that. It's a way to show her gratitude. And then the mother, of course, did the handwritten note. So it gives you a little bit of a flavor in terms of what they're feeling, what they're sensing. And at the end of the day, the last expression of gratitude that we would like to share with you is this one, because I think it captures in essence what we are all doing, whether it's, it doesn't matter who it is. Expression of gratitude and thank you, and the many blessings that you receive in return. It was, it has been very heartwarming. We're not done yet. We're still working on it. And so we're trying to not connect them to summer school, to high school. Some of the high schools are going to provide an opportunity to certain students to be able to complete their credits. So it has been, it's been a lot of work, but I will tell you, it has been a very gratifying task. And so we're very excited that we were able to be a part of the success of the children. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Sounds wonderful. Thank you, Gloria.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Very good.
We would meet weekly with the principals, board members, and talk about the fact that if they were having trouble finding students, that Gloria and her team wanted to step up and take the lead on that. And so Gloria, each week, would tell them, your people were like, what was the comment? The June bug comment?
My people, they have been trained, especially the homeless staff. And so I call them that they're like a duck on a June bug. They won't let it go until they grab the June bug.
I didn't really understand that saying, but she said it each week, and the principal said, okay, I'm sending this the June bug way. So thank you all for your work. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Student achievements, Duke University recognition, and academic pentathlon online results. Anything else, sir, Deanne?
That's all we have at this time, but just shout out to them. We're proud of all these kids. Beverly Hills really stepped up on the online competition format and brought back some great recognition for PISD. So kudos to the coach and to the students who stayed together throughout COVID to prepare for this.
And also for the Duke students that outstanding achievement on college exam. They always do well.
Yes.
No policy tonight. Financial section. Consideration possible approval of budget amendments for April?
I move that we approve the budget amendments. Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Morgan. Second by Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions? All in favor? I guess I have one question. About the $10,000, I guess, is this like an accrual for the ad building? Carla or Deanne?
That's 10 million.
10 million.
I meant 10 million. You know, I misspoke on the video about rooftop ministries. It was really $12,000, not 1,200. So I have, I guess I have a problem with my decimals.
And what we're doing is we're just moving the money to be prepared for when the bids come in, so we're ready. It's still in local dollars. We've just moved it to account for to say, this is what it is on the fund balance side.
Right. Have we moved any other funds over there yet?
No, sir.
Okay. And how much do we anticipate moving over there?
Total, I've estimated around 30 million, but I started with a small 10 million.
Do we have that much in the bank, Carla?
Ma'am, we do.
You don't send hot checks, do you, Carla?
No, ma'am. No, sir.
Any more questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of automotive assessment, medical, flood, musical instruments, travel accident, vocational interns, crime, general liability, law enforcement liability, cyber liability, and builder's risk insurance program for 2020 and 2021.
So move. Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Morgan. Second by Mrs. Sullivan. Comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Motion carries. Consideration possible award of CSP number 220, excuse me, number 2OP-041DG for property, boiler, and machinery educators legal liability and crisis management insurance.
So move. Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Morgan. Second by Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Motion carries. Information only, 2020, 21, but proposed budgets.
So board members, as you know, we've had a previous budget conversation, and I just wanted to bring back to you where we're at, just to keep you posted throughout the process and give you, of course, food for thought as we go forward and have future board workshops regarding budget. So of course, you'll see there's a local budget 3A and 3B. There's really no change to those. They were presented in that format during the May 4 meeting. 3A was that everything in the kitchen sink. That's why you see that large deficit of 44 million plus dollars. It included a 3% raise in everyone's wish list, whether those were departments or... whether those were departments or campuses. Then you had 3B, which of course included a 2% raise for all employees. It had lots of new positions, reclasses. But we had definitely pared down those wish lists or that kitchen sink, as I called it. And it had about a little over a $19 million deficit, 19,9, so closer to 20. 3C is what we're bringing you also tonight. It includes a 1.25% raise, which would get us over that $56,000 hump for new teacher salaries. Our goal was to exceed that this year, to be more competitive or in line with local school districts. We're still in lots of conversations with other districts about what raises they're seeing and really don't have a lot of information. The commissioner and other conversations that we have on a weekly basis are just keeping us reserved in the fact that we don't know what the future holds with COVID-19 and the impact it's had on the Texas economy. So we're going to continue to do our due diligence and research other school districts, what they are planning for raises. Because we always like to give you the big picture and how we remain competitive. 3C with that 1.25 gives us a $17 million deficit. And Carla, if there's anything that you want to add or include at this time, this was just for purposes of keeping them informed of the different conversations we've had as we've had budget meetings. So is there anything you want to add, Carla? I think that covers it. There's no real big change to revenue, whether it's local, state, or federal at this time. We do know we're getting some CARES money. We're still evaluating that. It was publicly put out that we would get 14 million. But what we have to understand is there's some limitations on that, where it can be used and where it cannot be used. And of course, some portion of those funds have to go to the private school sector. So we're still, since we just got that information the end of last week, we're still looking through all the rules and guidelines. And we'll be coming back with you about more information related to CARES funding and how it will help Pasadena ISD.
Dan, this budget takes into account a decline in enrollment, right?
I think, Carla, you left it at a flat.
I left it at a flat, and I'm running a 92% ADA rate.
Okay. So we know that we're waiting to hear from the commissioner about funding if parents chose not to send their students back to school, what that would look like, whether there would be funding for either face-to-face, virtual, or distance learning, or a hybrid of the two. So we haven't been given details of any of that funding related to next school year. So as we've talked, and you're quite aware, we're planning for quite a few scenarios in making sure that we are prepared to keep our students and our staff safe. So I always say, when people ask, we're planning for the worst and we're hoping and praying for the best. And we're going to have everything planned between. We feel like we'll be prepared much better than we were at spring break time. Even though we had educators that did an excellent job in this district, we're going to be even better prepared if we were to face the same challenge again, whether it's throughout the year or in different time periods of the year.
Good job. Any other questions? Any other explanations? Thank you very much. Operations section, consideration and possible action to accept a donation of real property described as Lot 3, save and accept the west 47.05 feet thereof and all of Lot 9, Block 1 of Walter Williams Court. An addition in Harris County, Texas, recorded in volume 31, page 38 with the Harris County map records from Health Corp Network EAK.
Some move. Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Morgan. Second by Mr. Fernandez. Any comments or questions?
I have a question, Marshall.
Okay.
We're on the plot of the property. Is this particular piece of real estate?
So this is something that y'all have heard about before. This is up at that small parking lot in the front of Jackson. So when I was serving as an educator there at Jackson, we weren't allowed to park in that lot or use it because the businesses across the street had ownership or full rights. We maintained it. We've always maintained it, whether that's mowing or edging, striping, or otherwise. But this is finally, with lots of research and lots of negotiations, this is finally going to make that property fully Pasadena ISD. So we're very fortunate to get this donation because we've been wanting to clear this up for years.
Yes. And I think those businesses across the street, ownership has changed in that, and that should validate this.
It definitely has.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye. Motion opposed? No. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval allows expenditure authorization, AEA number C-002 for the San Raven High School Tennis Courts and site improvement project.
Some move. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan. Second by Mrs. Cajano. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? No. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval allows expenditure authorization, AEA number point, number point 01 for the Facility Assessment Group 3 HVAC Upgrade Project.
Some move. Second.
With Mrs. Morgan. Second by Mrs. Sullivan. Comments or questions? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? No. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of construction contract for the new maintenance, operations, and warehouse facility project and funding by the 2017 bond contingency pool.
Some move. Second.
With Mrs. Morgan. Second by Mrs. Sullivan. Comments or questions?
Question. Fred? Joris is a contractor out of San Antonio, and they're a good contractor. There's no question about that. Where'd they fall in the lineup, the bid lineup?
Just so you know also, and I'm gonna let Kevin answer that, the Houston office, the vice president is here, Nathan Plake. But I'll let Kevin talk first, and then I'll let him introduce Nathan as well. They have worked with Umbel, Allen, Frisco, and Conroe ISD. But first, answer Mr. Roberts' question, Kevin, if you will, and then introduce Nathan.
Yeah, Mr. Roberts, we had nine general contractors bid on the project. We did all the ranking with our whole team. And Joris came up on top. That was including their price and other qualifications. So it was.
They were the low bidder? They were the low bidder?
Let me check and see if that was the lowest price. Because price is just one of the factors.
Well, I understand that, but I'm just wondering where it's at. And you had nine contractors. That's a lot of people bidding work nowadays.
Yeah.
It is.
I believe they were low. Yes, sir.
Good.
Kevin, do you want to introduce Nathan as well?
Yes. As Mr. Roberts stated, yeah, that Joris is based out of San Antonio. They also have offices in Houston, Austin, Dallas. They've worked for Conroe ISD, Umbel ISD, Allen, and then Mesquite and Frisco. They have extensive experience with warehouse type facilities, which is going to be a real asset for this project. They've built HEB stores for the last 25 years. And then a majority of their work is repeat clients. But we do have the Houston office VP with us tonight, and that's Mr. Nathan Plake. So I just wanted to welcome him. And we look forward to a new relationship with another general contractor for the district.
They're a good contractor.
Welcome to Pasadena.
Absolutely. Appreciate your bidding.
We're excited about getting this project started, most definitely. This will not only help our maintenance and operations folks, but it, you know, impacts our transportation as well. So we're excited.
Great. Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? No. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of construction contract for the Pasadena High School Culinary Arts Kitchen Renovation Project.
Some move. Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? No. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of construction contract and engineering for the Pasadena Memorial Early College High School Welding Shop Renovation Project.
Some move. Second.
Was that you, Nelda?
Yes.
Okay. With Mrs. Sullivan, excuse me, motion by Mrs. Morgan. Second by Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions?
So board members, and Kevin, you can correct me if I'm wrong. We have done some renovations here previously, and really that program's busting at the seams, serving kids from not only Pasadena Memorial in this area for welding, but also Tegler students as well. So ventilation was the main factor of needing these renovations there. So just to let you know that.
That's correct.
Thank you so much. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? No. Motion carries. Any questions on construction update? If not, we're going into the miscellaneous section. Tonight, we have a Mr. Robert Marquez. I hope I say that right, who has, wants to speak. According to public comments, BED local. Latest topics not listed on the agenda. And we give him three minutes to make his comments. And Mrs. Morgan will keep time, Mr. Marquez. And we appreciate you being here tonight. And you're ready to start if you're ready, sir. Are you there?
I am.
Okay, good.
I just want to make sure, we're going to do a test real quick. Again, my name is Robert Marquez. I'm at 4002 Fox Meadow Lane. To be familiar, I'm across the street from Young Elementary and Miller Intermediate. The reason why I'm coming to the board, and thank you very much for the Board of Trustees for allowing me to speak. And congratulations, Superintendent, for, you know, getting through this whole school year. It's still not over. But the reason why I'm coming to you is that during the last couple of weeks, we've gotten heavy rains, and it's going to continue. And we're going to have an uptick in hurricane season this year. I'm an emergency management planner, but I'm new to my area. I just moved in about six months ago. I'm a graduate of South Houston '98, so I'm familiar with the area. But I'm new to my home. My home flooded this past weekend and two weeks ago during the seasons. And but the unfamiliar thing was that my neighbors were coming to me and saying, this has never happened before. So as an emergency management planner and mitigation, I started looking at the flow path. And I noticed that Young Elementary and Miller Intermediate, that area floods a lot. So I put in a request to talk to you about it. But this morning, I was contacted by the Assistant Superintendent and also Mr. Rice from Facilities. We were able to talk, emergency management talk, mitigation talk. And they're going to come out, and they're going to try to help with it. I've already talked with the city of Pasadena about the easements. And they've actually, today, they graded out the ditches because they hadn't been fished out in a while. These are the small mitigation measures that you can use to partner with the local governments that aligns with your strategic plan, your 2018 to 2020 strategic plan. And also, eventually, y'all will be approving the All-Hazard Mitigation Plan, which was a partnership with a lot of cities in Harris County and the district. So I just wanted to make sure that I put it on record that while I was frustrated because Young Elementary and Miller Intermediate is such a big area, I got all the grass clippings in my pool, in my front yard, because it had just been mowed a couple of days earlier. But I, and we wanted to make sure that we got everything. So that's it.
Thank you for your coming to us with this and for meeting with our facilities people and the city. And we hope this will be resolved very quickly.
Oh, yes. It was pretty quick from the start to the end. And again, like I say, it's good to be informed and to make sure, you know, we partner with our citizens, community leaders, Pasadena ISD and the city of Pasadena to do our mitigation planning.
Absolutely.
Mr. Marquez. Appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you. Okay. We're now going to adjourn. Close session presented to Texas Government Code Sections 551.07, forth the purpose considering deployment evaluation, reassignment duties, disband or dismissal of a public officer, employee, or to complaints or charges against a public officer, employer, employee, or to deliberate, reassignment, or duties of a public officer. And we will reconvene and open session after we do this executive session. And we all have the number. So we will come back to close and announce the reorganization. Thank you, Mr. Marquez. Good night, y'all.
Night, y'all. All stay safe.
Okay. Nomination for president.
I nominate Vicki Morgan.
I nominate Jack Bailey.
Okay. We have two nominees. We need to vote by voice. Okay? All for Vicki. Say your name, please.
Nelda.
Morgan.
Nelda and Fred?
Vicki.
Maricel.
Well, we don't even have another vote then. We got four. Okay? So Ms. Vicki Morgan will be president.
Thank you.
And second would be by who?
Congratulations, Vicki.
Thank you, Jack.
Congratulations, Vicki.
Thank you.
I nominate Maricel as vice president. Second.
Sullivan, Maricel Cajano for vice president. Second by Mrs. Morgan. Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Board secretary.
I nominate Fred Roberts as board secretary.
Second.
Maricel, second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? No. Motion carries. Board secretary, assistant secretary.
I nominate Nelda Sullivan for assistant secretary.
Second.
With Mrs. Morgan. Second by Mrs. Cajano. For Mrs. Sullivan for assistant secretary. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? No. Motion carries. Our board member for new organization will be president. Ms. Maricel Cajano will be vice president. Mr. Roberts, secretary. Sullivan, the assistant secretary. Set date for regular next meeting, Tuesday, the 23rd, 2020.
A move that we approve, Tuesday, June 23rd, 2020, is our next regular meeting. At this time, is it anticipated that that will be in the boardroom?
Second it? I need a second.
A second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan. Second by Mrs. Sullivan. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? No. Meeting motion carries. Meeting's adjourned at 9:13 PM. Thank you all so much.